Good morning, everyone. We will call this the July 15th Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We all stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple special awards we'd like to give first before we get into this meeting. First of all is PJ. And if you'll step forward. Do you guys want to come join in?
Sure.
She received the Gold Star Award as a Girl Scout. So those of you who know what Eagle Scout is, she is a Gold Award member and highest ranking as possible. And so we're very honored to have her here with us. Come on, Carla. You get up closer. I think you know Carla. I think you're going to know Tricia here. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Say anything or?
Talk about what it is.
So please limit it to an hour.
So my neighbor previously, he did for his Eagle Scout, a baseball diamond that was set in Clarksville. That night, it was completely destroyed, that previous night, by somebody doing four-wheelers and bringing in vehicles. So I decided that I wanted to fence in the complete area so no vehicles could get in. The only thing that can get in are people, as well as landlords that have the key to the gate. We've decided that the name of the baseball diamond is going to be the Scouts Field because it's been only now a Girl Scout goal project, but an Eagle Scout. So I started this mainly my senior year, along with graduation and my senior year outreach. So we had some issues, as well as weeds. They kind of got away from us. But with the help of my mom, my dad, as well as the town of Clarksville, we got pulled together. We hosted a kickball tournament, which my team lost substantially. So I had a good time. We had a nice luncheon at the new family-built community center there in Clarksville, and it's actually being used for baseball tournaments and kickball tournaments. So the main goal was to get kids off the streets, and I have not seen a kid yet really playing on the streets today. So it's using its purpose pretty well. So I'm excited to get it done.
Thank you. You guys might just go ahead and state it out.
We would go ahead and call, I believe Pat Scowden is how they're called, Pat Scowden to the podium. And if some of you haven't heard yet, Pat will be retiring from county government at the end of this month on the 31st. But we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize him today. Almost this next spring, I think, would have been 30 years. And Pat and I first met at the Sheriff's Department when we opened the new jail. There were a whole slew of new jail officers that were hired back in 1990. Pat served in that capacity as a corrections officer at the Sheriff's Department, went on to be a case manager at our work release center, then the director of the work release program through the move to the new community corrections center, and then all played with the executive director for Tippinew County Community Corrections, and now in his role as weights and measures. So he has been around a lot and done probably more than most county employees do in terms of variety of jobs. He's been a tough guy to replace. I've always enjoyed working with you, Patrick. So we have a plaque for you today, and it reads, "Patrick Scowden on his 15th day of July 2019 with sincere appreciation for your loyalty and over 29 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Tippinew County and Tippinew County Government." Congratulations on time.
I think he's better. He's a Harrison grad and a classmate.
I don't know so much either.
And we'll be hosting a drop-in in the morning on 31st here in the.
I already said I thought I was sitting. I started at 6:29, a month before they moved into the new jail. We moved to inmates on April Fool's Day. I remember that, ma'am. I'm back at 6:29 getting my grade. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval minutes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes from the regular meeting of Monday, July 1st.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Accounts payable and vouchers.
Mr. President, I'd like to recommend the claims from July 2nd, 2019 through July 15th, 2019, including the payrolls dated July 12th, 2019, to be approved without exception.
Mr. President, I move for approval to submit it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Highway, Stewart.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First item on the agenda is ordinance 219-18-CM. This ordinance will vacate portions.
Hang on.
Mr. President, I would move that we hear ordinance 2019-18-CM.
Second.
Now you can go.
Sorry, I'm not used to that. Okay. So we're hearing, this ordinance would vacate a portion of County Road 200 North between Skylar and the railroad. It's an old remnant from a previous realignment of the road. It's in preparation for the Loves Truck Stop construction. The vacate was published in the Journal and Courier on July 1st. Notifications went out. We have registered receipts. Utilities have no objections.
Okay. Thank you.
So you probably want to see your paper in the public.
Anyone in the audience want to speak, opposed, or in favor of this ordinance? Right ahead. Please sign your name.
My name's Sarah Harville. I'm with the ESO. We're the engineers for Loves Truck Stops. I just want to say that Loves is really excited to go in here, but right away it's abandoned and just never vacated. So they're just hoping to vacate that so we can move forward with design and construction.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else for or opposed this ordinance? See no one. Bob?
Byers.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Murtaugh.
Yes. Ordinance 2019-18-CM passes three to zero on first reading.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules in here, ordinance 2019-18-CM on second, final reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. On the motion?
I'll make the motion. We hear ordinance 2019-18-CM on second, final reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Once again, in case anybody changed their mind, is anyone like to speak, opposed, or in favor of this ordinance? See no one. Bob?
Brown.
Yes.
Murtaugh.
Yes.
Byers.
Yes.
Ordinance 2019-18-CM passes three, zero, on second and final reading.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next is opening some bids for traffic signal installation out of County Road 50 West and County Road 500 North.
Looks like we've got one bid from Hawk Enterprises. That's good. I sharpened my letter. It's like a base bid total of $261,148.
Okay. Thank you to the Hawk bid. I assume we take that under advisement for right now? Okay.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We take that bid under advisement.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this bid under advisement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Continuations?
Yeah, we have two continuation certificates. They're both one-year, $5,000. The first is for Frontier North Inc., and the second for Vectren Energy.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve both of the continuation certificates as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve these continuation certificates. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Purchase of real estate from Columbia Partners. Doug?
Yeah, what you have in your packet is a form of offer to purchase from Concord Partners, to Concord Partners South. This is down by the highway garage. We have some, we have some issues on the boundary of our property and Concord Partners that have sort of drifted along for years. They've been pretty good not pressing the issue, but I think they want to transfer the property, and so we want to get our title work cleaned up. This offer to purchase is us buying .52 acres from them at a purchase price of $41,240. It comes with a form of lease agreement, so they agree not to come after us for any kind of inverse condemnation for our activities on what is arguably their side of the boundary. And then another exhibit is a stormwater discharge easement, so we've got a pond on our property that they want to continue discharging into, and this lets them keep doing that. And so the motion, if you approve, would be to authorize the president to execute the purchase offer and convey it to Concord Partners and to take further action as necessary to close on the transaction.
Okay. Any questions? So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the purchase of this real estate, as Doug stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Thank you. Superior Court III.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
My name is Matt Bullock. I am the 4D Commissioner, and I'm here on behalf of Superior Court III in the 4D Court. We're asking today that the council approve a contract between county, the 4D Court, Superior III, and Dossit Consulting to assist us in our 4D accounting, as well as our incentive and claim.
Can't find better company?
That's what he said, too. He said, when we get out there, it's going to be.
Hello, Jeff.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our number's Kemper, and he's here on behalf of Dossit.
Thank you.
Just a little bit of background. Jeff Dossit, my boss, and I had a chance to meet with Judge Graham and Matt Bullock probably a month or so ago over an issue about a lot of the detailed claiming work that goes on. And our firm works in many counties with auditors, as we are here in Tippinew County, clerks in many of the counties, as well as prosecutors and 4D courts. And in speaking with these folks a couple of months ago, and then having a meeting, clearly they were interested in our services. And Mr. Dossit, as most of you might already know, is very detailed in completing the report. Claiming is required to be sent to the state every month. Quarterly reports are necessary. Part of our service is what we do for our clients, is to be there in case there is an audit, and then we put an annual report together. And basically, what it boils down to is claiming for expenses that can be reimbursed through the Child Support 4D program. And we currently are in, I think, 39 counties, have about 72 clients, and happy to report that among our clients are probably 16 or 17 either prosecutor's offices or 4D courts. We had, I think, a very good meeting with Matt Bullock and Judge Graham, and submitted our proposal, which I think you've all got a copy of that. And I'm just here to support Matt, see if there's any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any questions? None?
I'll just make a note that the fee will be $500 per claim. Is that correct?
Per month.
Per month?
Per month.
Per each monthly? Okay. Okay.
Those funds, those fees can be paid out of the incentive funds. And as I'm sure you're all aware, the county has three separate incentive funds, and I don't know that we need to go into the balances, but there's funds to pay these kind of fees. So nothing will come out of the general fund. As a former councilman, of course, I appreciate that.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the additional, the contract additional terms and conditions with Dossit Consulting for the 4D Commissioners.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Thank you. Deanna? Not Deanna.
Hi, I'm Tammy Malindor. I'm the Assistant Director at Tippinew Villa. Deanna is not here. She's currently on vacation. And she asked me to come to present a proposal to increase our private rate pay to $5 a day. So we'd go from $47 a day to $52 a day. The last change was done 10 years ago, in 2009. What we have approximately figured, it'll give us about another $18,000 in revenue. And if it's approved today, I will be sending letters out to the families that are private pay and emails so that they have at least 30 days prior notice.
And what percentage of our census is on private pay?
Probably about 10 to 11 residents out of 77.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Mr. President, I'll make a motion. We approve the proposal for private pay increase to $52 a day for the Tippinew County Villa.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I think since it's been 10 years, I think we do know the costs have gone up, so.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Thank you. Shirley.
Good morning. How do you want to do this? You want to do a motion for each one, or you want me to let you know what's going on first?
Do we want, do we approve them all at once?
I would just, I would think that one motion would work, right, for the positions?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do like a synopsis?
Yeah, I'll do that. Yes. Okay, so originally, we had asked for, I believe, 28 positions for 2020, plus of one for 2019. Some of those were new positions that needed to have descriptions for them, so those have gone through the committee. The rest will go through the normal process, which would be getting approved by the Commissioners. First one is going to be Carry Home. There's a couple of things that need to be done in 2019. First is to create the position of Trainer and eliminate another one of the Youth Development Supervisors. You may recall that we just did that with one of the other Youth Development Supervisors, changed that one. So this would leave just one Youth Development Supervisor.
And sorry to interrupt already, but is that, so we're going to do that today?
Today for 2019. So you probably do want to do at least a motion for that one.
Okay. And is that the only such position?
That is eliminating the Trainer, creating the Youth Development. There's another one that will have a title change effective immediately, but we.
Okay. So why don't, just remind us to do that after?
I'll remind you.
Okay? All right. Thank you.
So I need a motion for that one, please. I need a motion for that one to create the Trainer and eliminate the other, or not?
We will need that, but why don't we go through the whole?
Okay. Wait until the end?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry. Then with that remaining Youth Development Supervisor, the state has changed the requirements wherein a bachelor's degree is required now, no longer preferred. It was actually classified as a PAT III back in 2010, but Rebecca did not do it as such because most of the people in the position at that point in time just had below the bachelor's degree, and it was only preferred. So we've saved the county a lot of money by not making that change until now. And that one will not require action on your part, just on the council. Then for 2020, for Carry Home, this will be another youth-based, school-based youth liaison, which is a PAT II position, and it will be budgeted through user fees. And that gives you a net of one new position for 2020. Prosecutor's Office had asked for a couple of things that will need to take place today, and that is, they had four secretaries, excuse me, three secretaries and two legal assistants. And with the change in the court software system, they're now doing all the same duties, and therefore, they need to all be legal assistants. So those secretaries will become legal assistants. That won't require any change, since it's just moving them into the new title. But we will need to eliminate, once we've changed those, it will change it on the salary statement from Secretary to Legal Assistant. In addition to that, and that would take place in 2019. In addition to that, Pat asked for three new legal assistants, which would be the Comet Four. He asked for Administrative Coordinator Prosecuting Attorney's Office, which would be a PAT III. That was a new position. The description was approved, but the committee didn't feel that there would be enough funding at this time. He had also asked for four new Deputy Prosecuting Attorney positions. So that is a net of new positions for 2020. For Do-It, there were three requested positions. The first one is going to have a change in title, and that is formerly PC Tech, or currently it's PC Tech, which is a PAT III position. The job description was upgraded. The title was suggested a change to Service Desk Tech, because they do more than just work on the PCs. Title change will need to be updated immediately. The department did ask for an additional Service Desk Tech. However, that one would not be able to be funded. Second position was IT.
I'm sorry, is that Service Tech Tech? Service Desk Tech, a PAT III?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And that will end up just being re-titled.
Okay.
The IT Project Manager description was sent to Wagner Irwin and Shiley. It was classified as an SO, and the recommended range would be $66,000 to keep it in line with the other department positions. We did approve that one. There was also a Digital Media Administrator, which is going to be on hold because they were going to make some additional changes. So that is one net position for the Do-It Department in 2020. Surveyor had requested a Surveyor/Drainage Coordinator. That position was created. It was classified by the consultant as a PAT Four, but the committee did not recommend the creation of that position, so no new positions for 2020 for Surveyor. Human Resource?
Well, make sure we're getting this correct. We agreed that.
That the description was classified.
Correct. Right. We agreed the description was good, but we just don't recommend for payment.
Creation because of the budget. Human Resource had asked for one administrative assistant. That description came back as a Comet Two. Committee said that the description and classification level was approved, but didn't feel there'd be adequate funding, so that is zero, no new positions for 2020 for Human Resources. Sheriff's Department had originally asked for 12 new positions. One of those was a new position description, which is Property/Evidence/Sex Offender Registry Assistant. It came back as a Pole Two. The committee did approve the description and classification level for this position and recommended the creation of the position. They asked for three new Merit Deputies due to budget. I believe that's been brought down to two. They asked for six new jail deputies. That's been brought down to two. And they had asked for two new dispatchers, and that would be zero at this point. So there's a net of five new positions for the Sheriff's Department. Probation Department would like one new probation officer. Already has a description. It goes on the probation pay chart for the state, so it's going to depend on the number of years' experience that that new hire would have with probation. So that's one new position for 2020. And Court Services has requested one new position with an existing job description of Evaluator, which is a PAT III. So that's one new position for Court Services. So that is a total of nine new positions.
So, Mr. President, if you're okay with it, we'll, I'll make a motion for the positions, and then we'll go back and do the cleanup. Is that okay?
We'll try it.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. President, I would make the motion that we approve the following positions to be considered. And as we do this, I just want to remind department heads, this is the second in a three-step process. So in other words, just because we're doing this today doesn't mean, it still has to go through budget hearings. So that would be Carry Home. For Carry Home, it'd be School-Based Youth Liaison, which would be a PAT Two. For Do-It, a IT Project Manager, that would be an SO. For the Sheriff's Department, two Merit Deputies, two jail deputies, and one civilian employee called Property Evidence Sex Offender Registry Assistant, and that would be a Pole Two. For Probation Department, there would be a probation officer in the Adult Division that would be on the probation, the state probation pay chart. And Court Services, there'd be an E evaluator, which is a PAT III position, for a total of nine positions.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve these nine new positions as recommendations. Any further discussion?
And the Court Services position, those have all in the past been out of their user fee fund, but this recommendation is for the general fund, correct?
I think, you know, that's, yes, that is a, I think it's going to have to be a yes.
Yes.
Well, and the committee also talked about the Property Evidence Sex Offender. That could possibly be out of these things, I guess, also, but that's when budget time comes to.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have a motion on the floor for nine new position recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Okay. And then, so to first clean up, I'm going to go back to you and Carry Home.
To Carry Home, we're going to eliminate the Youth Development Supervisor, PAT II position, one of those, leaving only one. Do that until we fill the Trainer position? Right, but they've got to be created. Once a Trainer position, so you need to create the Trainer position, and then you need to eliminate the other.
Okay.
So we usually do that all in one meeting.
Okay. So we need to do that today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'll make a motion. We create the Trainer position and eliminate the.
Youth Development Supervisor.
Youth Development Supervisor position.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Okay. And then.
Prosecutor.
Prosecutors, the Secretary positions will be changed to Legal Assistant, so there will no longer be the position of Legal Secretary, or, yeah, of Legal Secretary. It'll all be Legal Assistant.
And then how many such positions?
Three.
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we eliminate the three Legal Secretary positions for the Prosecutor's Office, and then create the legal, three Legal Assistant positions as stated.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Okay, and then Do-It.
Do-It, you're just updating the title of PC Tech to Service Desk Tech.
Mr. President, I would move that we change the title from formerly titled PC Tech as a PAT III to Service Desk Tech.
Second.
Okay, we have another motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
That's it?
Got them?
Got it all done?
You got it all figured out, Bob?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sharon.
Morning.
Good morning.
We have some new contracts that need to sign for grant funding. Rebecca, contracts home free, answer service. Ready for more? Thank you, Doug, for all of your hard work on these, as always. So these coincide with the beginning of our fiscal year grant funding for JDI and Juvenile Community Corrections. community corrections. Is there any particular order, or do you want me to just kind of talk about all of them first?
We've got the sheet, we start at the, start at the top.
Okay. So the first one is a contract with Oliver Educational Services to update our teen brain curriculums. This is understanding my teenager teen brain and teaching my teen, or teaching the teen brain. These are web-based curriculums that everyone still have to get updated so that the trained, trainers can access them and use the new materials. The next is a contract with Mike Daly and Dr. Matt Alsima for the training that they do for policing the teen brain. And then there's contract for back on track facilitators, as well as juvenile justice jeopardy facilitators. And finally, contracts for teen court judges who come and support the school court work that we do.
So, quick question for you. You know, one of the contractors for back on track is a full-time employee, a county employee, correct?
For back on track?
Yeah.
Yes, Mariah and Misty are both, yes.
I thought Misty was contract.
No, no.
No, she's, okay. So what do we do, I mean, I'm just hoping that there's supervision to make sure that that work's not being done.
Oh, yes, absolutely. So I approve all of the time course payroll. And so just like our safe place contracts, those are full-time county employees as well, and they serve on-call for safe place. And so if there's a call out, I make sure that that, during that timeframe, because all of the reports come back, I make sure that they are not on the county clock as well. The same for back on track. Both Mariah and Misty traditionally do not work weekends, and that's when the back on track trainings are. So that's a really clean way to make sure that those duties are separate.
Okay.
And they truly are separate duties.
Okay. Thank you very much. And would you recommend separate motions for all these contracts?
I think you can group a few of them. So I think Oliver's one, Alsima's one, and then we're the ones that are grouped together.
Okay, just do them. Yeah, so each, each line item, each bullet point here, okay. Mr. President, I'll make the motion, we approve the contract with Oliver Educational Services for updating the teen brain curriculum.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That pass?
Okay. Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the contract with Mike Daly for juvenile law training at policing the teen brain.
Second. Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Mr. President, I'd move that we approve the contract with Dr. Matt Alsima for adolescent brain development.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the contract for back on track facilitation with Sanford Swanson, Mariah Anderson, and Misty Robinson.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Mr. President, I'd move that we approve the contract for juvenile justice jeopardy facilitators for Sanford Swanson and Ben North.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
And, Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the contract for teen court judges with John Holly and Amanda Guzman.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Safe place.
Oh. Mr. President, I'll make a motion, we approve the contract for safe place on-call therapist with Rebecca Humphrey, Lindsay Wright, Devin Moore, Alicia Phillips, Caitlin Romza, and Emily Hardy.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Donna.
Good morning. With the unfortunate drug epidemic that we have, and the contagious diseases that are being passed around, we felt the need to go with a true biohazard clean once a month. You have to be certified by the state of Indiana, and the drugs are ordered, the cleanup products are ordered through a pharmaceutical company. While our maintenance staff does an outstanding job of our building, and my office does a great job too, we are not state certified for biohazard cleanup. So that's why we had hired, thank you for that covenant. HIV dies when one dies, but C, hepatitis C and C. diff live forever. And it's very easy to catch that. And I just don't want that to happen to any member of our staff or any of the other folks that we have in our building. And I appreciate you doing that, thank you.
Doug, have you had a chance to look at this?
Yeah, I did some work on it. It's, I think, I'm not sure what you have there is, it's just saying, I'm random of understanding.
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's the.
So have our additional terms been incorporated?
Yeah, incorporated that. I used their form as much as I could, but there were a couple things that needed cleanup. But the upshot is it's $450 a month for one cleaning in a month, and sometimes there might be a need for additional, and that'd be at another $450.
So this will be the document that we're actually going to execute today, then?
And you added e-verify, I understand.
Right. Couple of state requirements.
Mr. President, I would move approval of the MOU and services with covenant emergency services as outlined by council and our coroner.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this contract. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Plantin goes.
Yeah, the departments have submitted the 2020 salary statements for, for the budget as we're, as we're coming up to that. State statute requires for me to turn these over to the commissioners for you to review and make recommendations to the county council before August 20, is what the statute says. And so the, the salary statements, they do reflect the full implementation of the Wagner Irwin Shealy salary study plus 3% pay increases, and that's for everyone with the exception of the probation officers. And I believe that came at like 2.1% is what the state recommendation was for the minimum salaries there. And just one other little note that maybe goes back to the new position requests. The total requests for 2020, not just salaries, but all the operating and all the budgets for the general fund increased by 14.1%. Now, that did reflect most of the positions that you did not approve this morning, so that will go down quite a bit. The revenue estimates for 2020 increased by 2.9%. So we have a big increment there. We knew there was going to be an increment just with, taking the whole salary study plus 3% is a, is a bigger step than what we have done in the past and, you know, because we have done the salary step, study in some increments before, over a course of three or four years, but now we're doing it once. But still, when we have 14% compared to less than 3% revenue estimate, it is going to be a, a difficult task for the council to get everything put together.
And so Bob, 2.9 is the general fund, correct?
That is just the general fund, yes. And it does have an estimate in there. You know, a big chunk of that is the income tax. We, and that is my estimate, I increased that by 4%. It could be a lot more than that, it could be less than that. But that is just what I have at this point, along with the estimates that we've received from the other departments.
And do we think we'll have any more information by the time budget hearings are allowed to s, to confirm that?
The, yeah, the Department of Local Government Finance, they have to give us an estimate of, of the, the local income tax. They give us about three different times. The first one will come before budget hearing.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll have, and that should be very close to the final number. So hopefully we'll be in good shape by that time.
And then, did you say that the state recommended period was 2.1?
2.1 for the probation officers, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
So Bob, it's, it is pretty safe to say that, given what we know, unless there are just significant changes between now and DLGF getting us that number, that final number, this is not only, that three, that getting it to the, to the scale and 3% is a big reach and an unlikely reach.
It, it is. A lot of the salaries, you know, they're, they're all over the board as far as the increases, but having an 8% salary increase was not unusual for certain employees, for certain classes of employees. So, yeah, and, and hopefully I'll be prepared to have something less than that or at least have it in, in my back pocket to know if we can't do the, the study plus 3%, what, what impact that would have. And we'll get those numbers all put together by the time we have budget hearings towards the end of, of August.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Bob. Change order.
We have one on the Fairgrounds Project. It is from Heartland Excavating, and it amounts to a deduction of $3,976 and an increase of $1,865, and I would move that we approve the change order as submitted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That passes. Any unfinished or new business?
I do. Apparently, apparently we didn't get everything done. We do have one more thing to, cleanup thing to take care of, if you want to.
Sorry, didn't have that on the original list. The end of last week, came in with a request, and this will be starting in 2019, to eliminate two part-time secretaries at Community Corrections and create one secretary. And Jason has the, the numbers on that.
And obviously there would be an increase in budget because of benefits, correct?[1710.83]